I don't personally know how big a problem it is algae going from one pond to the next. I can tell you that, that property to the west is tributary to Royal Oaks. So, it's always flowed there, it's gonna continue to flow there. It's really not a case where you could go and block that flow. It's, it has to go. It's a, it drains to Royal Oaks. So, I think we have to, to some degree, expect that, that there's gonna be runoff going to the Royal Oaks Pond from that property. The electric, the only thing I can suggest in the electric is maybe we can call ComEd and see if they can raise some of those transformers. It sounds like they got flooded out and it took the power out. I don't know anything else that could be done. Again, mention that we did have a very severe rain and, you know, it's not something that's gonna occur too frequently, we hope, but I think, it sounds like the problem is the transformers are a little bit low and got flooded out and it took the power out. So, I don't know of anything else that could be done with that. I think the, the other item was the streets. If you remember from our report from earlier in the year where we prioritize the streets, we know Royal Oaks, we know Royal Oaks streets are not in the best of condition. We have those earmarked for reconstruction because we wanna put on curb and gutter and a closed drainage system. So, generally with the streets that need reconstruction, we do let them fall apart before we rebuild them. There's, there's no monetary cost penalty in doing so. And this is, as opposed to the streets that need resurfacing, we like to do those right away. If we let them fall apart further, it is quite a bit more expensive to do those. So, in case of Royal Oaks, you know, the plan all along has been, you know, we're gonna let them fall apart because we do have worse streets that are higher up on the priority list. We have School Street that's earmarked for next year. That was the worst street in the city and I don't think anyone would dispute that. Coming up, Elmhurst is another big street. It's in bad condition. It needs a complete reconstruction with curb and gutter as well. And that's up on the list for Royal Oaks. So, you know, we can look at the prioritization of these streets each year, but again, there's, there's only so much money and there's only so many streets and we prioritize them as best we can. We were not proposing to do all of those in one year. We were proposing to do it over two years. I think we all recognized it was too big a project to do in one year. We can scale back the scope of the project. We could not do utility work. We could resurface some sections rather than reconstructing. There's all kinds of things we could do, but I think, again, as far as last year's study, we were looking at, you know, doing the whole package, doing it complete, taking care of everything. And that's what we came up with. We can pull a piece out and do it ahead of time. It's not as cost-effective to do a piecemeal like that. It's certainly cheaper in the short run, but we kinda felt it was better to just bite the bullet and do it all as one big project. But that could always be looked at in doing phasing. Or, again, lightening up on the utility side of things. It's, again, easier to, utilities, especially things like storm sewers, you know, you gotta keep connecting to pieces that are in place. So, to some extent, it's a lot easier to do the whole thing than to try and phase out pieces of it. But there's possibilities that could be looked at. And I hope I covered everything, but are there any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Graff. Mr. Douthat?
As I mentioned a couple of weeks ago, the staff is in the process of revising our five-year capital improvement program. Work is underway right now on doing that. These are the kind of projects we take a look at and prioritize from year to year to see if one particular street has gotten substantially worse than another. We're gonna be, our plans are to take that five-year capital improvement program to the city council right after the first of the year. And you can chew on those at that time and take a look at the projects that we're proposing, the state, excuse me, the stages that we're proposing in terms of which year we're programming those. And you can get a better handle from a macro point of view on the whole city when you take a look at that five-year CIP right after the first of the year. And those are our plans to address some of these issues.
Alderman Luiton?
I heard one complaint that seems to be one that has a low dollar cost to remedy. And Dave, Mr. Graff, would you consider getting the city's, what is that machine called that cleans the curbing?
A sweeper?
A sweeper? Thank you. I didn't know what it was called. Get a sweeper over there and pick up the grit. One, the complaint that I saw that would be the most economical to solve is just a one-day, one-hour sweep of the land to get up all the gravel that they're complaining about, at least that. Gentlemen, would that, that's something that is almost a no-cost item to take care of? You're complaining about the gravel? Yes, no?
Alderman Luiton, this is not generally a conversation give and take under your citizen comment. I'll be glad to talk to you after the meeting or you can take a break and Mr. Graff can talk to you outside, but...
No.
Not normally. We do have other people waiting for us to conduct business, but I'll be glad to discuss with you further after the meeting.
Dave? You wanna answer that question?
Yes, we can have the street sweeper go out there and, and run through subdivision.
Okay.
Mr. Zito? That's okay. Alderman Wesley?
Can I ask this one question? I don't know, Dave, you were out there, whoever, maybe Mr. Kramer can answer this question since his crew patched those holes. How wide of a spread are we looking that's affected that bad out there? Are we talking hard feet, two hard feet?
I think just that bulb is probably...
The whole ball or just that certain section?
The bulb is probably 50 to 100 feet of pavement, I would guess.
With a circle?
With a circle. I'm just guessing, I haven't imagined.
The middle of the circle is, is...
But the, but the area was I'm talking about where he, he's got the big potholes. To repair that, we would not have to redo that whole circle. Can we, and I don't know because asphalt plants are pretty much closing up right now. They're pretty close to it. In that section, is there a way temporary to fix it, saw cut that small area out and patch it? Or, or will we have to do the whole circle? Because I, I didn't see the whole circle in those pictures. I only seen in front of that area. Now, if that whole circle is, there's, obviously we can't because asphalt places are closing. But the area that's so bad up there and if it's going possibly to damage your snowplows, is there a way that we could saw, cut that out and, and patch that for this year?
We can do it. I guess my, I don't want John to speak about, but I guess my preference would be, let's keep an eye on it with just the regular pothole filling and then next year we'll include it as part of our contract patching and maybe do a little bit more, a little bit more extensive. It's, it's, once you start digging in there, a lot of times you find that there's no good breakpoint and you end up doing half the street. And I would rather avoid our crews getting put into that position. I'd rather I was doing a more thorough evaluation of it, draw it up and have a contractor do it next year would be my preference, but we'll, we'll have our crews keep an eye on it and keep the potholes filled.
Okay. My question is, may I follow up? One other question.
Alderman Wesley?
Instead, putting the stuff down and driving over with the tire, why can't we not pound it in with, with our, our pounding? I mean...
Is that the technical term?
Well, I don't know what they call that machine.
The material we used to patch it during those photographs is basically cold patch. It's not asphalt. Basically, we were doing a Band-Aid fix on that area. If we were to go in, cut, saw cut out a portion of that street, as Dave said, it would probably end up us doing 75% of the middle of that alligatored section that you saw. And when city crews came back and told me that would be the only effective remedy, I said, "At this point, we're just going to continue, put it on our monitor list for cold patching all winter and keep up to date on it." And city crews told me that at no point do they feel that it's worse off than any other pothole patched areas that we have on other streets, like Dave said, Elmhurst, where we did the same thing. And we're probably gonna have some bumpy rides in a plow truck, but at least we're gonna keep on top of it. We have a running tally of those, of those sections throughout the city.
I'll give any exception. Mr. Zito, again, you need to go to the podium.
Thank you, Your Honor. I appreciate that. It's easy for you to say that you don't live there, okay? I lived there, all right? We live there in a community, okay? Your snowplow, your cold patches, your snowplow's gonna dig those right up, okay? And, and the holes are gonna get bigger and bigger and bigger and bigger. Your crew was out there and they told you the only effective way to fix it is to saw cut it and patch it. So, if that's the only effect, and your crew even said that's the only effective way to do it, I don't understand why you can't do that. Okay? That's a, that in itself is a temporary fix until it's repaved in, in 2012 or 2014, whatever it is. But to put that cold patch on it and just keep putting that stuff on it, it just gets worse and worse and worse. The only, as you said yourself, your crew told you the only effective way to do it is to cut it. And so, I don't understand why that can't be done. I mean, it's, that can't be that expensive, you know? What you would be doing is probably sawing and cutting probably...
This, this area here?
About three-quarters of the circle. You'd probably be doing about 50 or 60% of that, three-quarters of the circle.
This part here is fine. That's, this is what was rated at 80% right here.
But the circle, that's gotta be like 30%. I mean, it's terrible. And, and I, I can't see where it would be cost prohibitive to fix it and to patch it the right way. I mean, that's just my opinion. And that, like I said, it's easy for you to say to let it deteriorate. Well, it's already deteriorated. It's already torn up and gone. It's shot. You know, you prefer to leave the streets get ruined and let them go and let them, until there's nothing there and then, and then you're gonna reconstruct them in six years from now. But that part of the circle's already gone. We're down to the ground already. You can't just put the cold patch on it because there's no, there's nothing there. And the sweet, street cleaner, the street sweeper to come by and sweep it up, you're just gonna be sweeping down to dirt. You're gonna pick up the gravel and there's gonna be dirt there. I mean, it's, it's gotta be cut and patched. I mean, that's, that's the only effective way to do it, sir. Thank you. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Mr. Zito and Mr. Moran. Yeah, I thank you for bringing all these concerns to our attention. You have...
We just have equal time, just a half a minute.
All right, fair.
I just, just wanted to say something about what Dave said about the curbing. Right now, it's like they're little, little troughs. And there's gonna be more water going into this pond. And that's something that I would, you know, engineering-wise, look at because you got all this water, you're gonna have much more water going into that Lake Royal or the retention pond here. So, I just wanted to highlight that for your engineering man of expertise, Dave, so that he could consider that when he, when he reviews the street. Because that would be an important factor because there's a lot of gullies in there that have a lot of water that you would put a curb on. And thank you, Vernon.
Thank you, gentlemen. We appreciate you bringing this to our concern. You have two very vibrant and effective aldermen, in Alderman Police and Alderman Coles. I certainly encourage you to talk to them further. As the manager said, we will be revisiting our priorities in January and sometimes streets move up and sometimes they move down the list. So, certainly be in contact with them and I thank you for bringing this to our concern. Alderman Winger, did you wanna make a comment?
I've been over there.
Oh, that was, you're not Alderman Winger. The chairman of the Public Works, do you wanna make a comment?
Yeah, just question on timing. So, if we did cut it and, and do the 75% of the circle, how much time is that to do one of the circles? What are we looking at?
Well, the work could be done in a day, but if we're gonna have a contractor do it, I think it's probably too late in the year to take care of that. I think the concern also is that even, I mean, even if we did it, we're gonna be, we're gonna be out there next year anyway. It's just more cost-effective to keep it patched together for the winter and then really do it right next year and do more involved patching work next year.
So, when we say next year, we would do the circles in a more effective manner and then wait to 2014 to do everything? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, but I think we'll look at the whole subdivision. We'll look at some patching operations through that whole subdivision for next year. Again, if that's, if that work is approved by city council and it's part of one of our capital improvement items to have a, the patching program, which we, we're proposing to make a separate program for next year. We piggybacked onto our resurfacing program this year and did some of that. We did some on Deer Path, for example, which had kinda fallen apart over the winter more than we expected. So, I guess I would propose that we, we do some patching throughout that subdivision next year.
And, and when would we be going out for bid on that piece? And is it included in the whole street program for next year when we go out for bid or would this be a separate bid?
I think it would be separate because I think, as, as things sit now, the whole street program for next year is gonna be the School Street Reconstruction. So, things like patching and preventative maintenance would be a separate contract we would do. You know, we could bid it in the spring, again, unless, unless the council decides to add some more streets for resurfacing. I think as we sit right now, that's what we're looking at for the program next year.
So, it's conceivable that the work could be performed early summer, late spring?
Yes, it could.
Okay, so I believe that that's the answer that you're looking for, that corrective action, it's very possible that we're gonna vote and take corrective action and then it would take place and after the winter.
Early, late spring or early summer?
Right, if it, if it gets voted on and it goes through. And I think that's what we're seeing.
Correct.
Or that would be the proposal.
All right, we're gonna move on at this point. I do not have any written communiques. I do not have anything under mayor's report. Mr. Manager?
Two items, Mr. Mayor, both informational. As you know, we had a public meeting on Tuesday afternoon at the junior high for the public to comment on the grade separation project. Our consulting engineers told me that about 50 citizens attended and, on balance, I think, are satisfied and prefer, satisfied with and prefer the alternative that you all discussed over weeks ago. The next step is to have the city council at its next meeting formally endorse that alternative, at which point the consulting engineers will start their environmental assessment and permit processing with IDOT and the Federal Highway Administration. So, we thought that was a fairly productive expenditure of time. We also had a meeting today with the Lakota Group and various property owners along the Thorndale Avenue corridor. I was unable to make that, but Mr. Clicker was. So, Ross, could you give us about two minutes on that, please?
Yes, as everyone is aware, we have hired, retained the services of Lakota Group with SB Friedman and Trans Systems to develop a master plan for the Thorndale Road corridor. We've begun work on this project very expeditiously as this is a, we're trying to coordinate this with the IDOT efforts for the design of the eventual western access to O'Hare. We've had meetings this week with IDOT and our consultant team and today we met with the property owners. The property owners were, were very appreciative of our efforts in that they, several commented that they were thankful for the city for taking these efforts to include them in this process and, and hear their concerns and, and make sure that there's, that their issues are brought to the table and addressed. It was a very positive meeting. All the property owners in attendance were very supportive of our efforts and we're moving along very quickly. We will be bringing a report regarding what the work we've done so far, including this meeting, and a proposed time schedule for the entire project to the council, hopefully in December. We'll be bringing that forward.
Is there any objections to any items on the consent agenda? May I motion approve the agenda? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries now. May I have a motion to approve the items on the agenda being letter credit reduction to Wright Development, letter credit reduction Lenar Chicago, approval to direct the city to enter draft in ordinance, approval to continue community development adjudication program for additional six months, and approval of special service area 13 street improvements, partial pay request number four. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call. Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Knite?
Yes.
Alderman Caddala?
Yes.
Alderman Shaki?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
Yes.
Alderman Luiton?
Yes.
Those items are approved. That brings us to committee chairman reports building and zoning and, planning, zoning and building. Alderman Shaki?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I need to make a motion for it to be tabled or make a, okay, make a motion to table a resolution of the City of Wood Dale, DuPage County, Illinois, authorizing the city to execute an agreement with FBG Corporation in Elmhurst, Illinois for construction of the Metro Computer Train Depot.
I'll interpret that as a motion to table to the next city council meeting. Is there a second? Where is that going? Back to committee? The next city council meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And also a resolution of the, to table to the next city council meeting. A resolution of the City of Wood Dale, DuPage County, Illinois, authorizing the city to execute an agreement with Metra for the operation and management of the new computer rail facility in Wood Dale, Illinois.
Is there a second?
Second.
Beckett?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And my report, thank you.
Public Health Safety and Judiciary, Alderman Coles?
No report.
Public Works, Alderman Winger?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion to approve, of approval of Clefstad lift station rehabilitation pay request number two.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the question? Roll call. Mayor? Alderman Wesley?
Question I have on that is, is this project almost completed? It seems like this has been a ongoing project and how much more do we owe on this project now that we just approved the bills for Christine Burke for that lift station?
There's only one item remaining on, on that lift station and that's the hookup of the gas service. And I understand they were working on that the last couple of days. I don't know if it's all completed, but that's the only thing they've been waiting on for the last couple of weeks. So, the work is basically all completed.
Could I just do a follow-up with that question? The gas service on that has been brought to our attention before due to the fact that they had the wrong gas meter or whatever was installed there. That was back some time ago on that Cliff Lift Station.
That was the Woods Lift Station.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That wasn't Clefstad.
I'm sorry. I made a mistake there. That's fine, Mayor.
Anything further? Roll call. Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Knite?
Yes.
Alderman Caddala?
Yes.
Alderman Shaki?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Luiton?
Yes.
That passes?
My next item, oh, I'm sorry. Next item to, motion approve 2008 sidewalk program pay request number one.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the question? Alderman Wesley?
Another question I have for you on the sidewalk, could you just give me a rundown what sidewalks were replaced or what area, were that the one that they went through the city and replaced the bad sidewalks or was there a street?
This was on many different streets. A lot of it was just one or two squares. This is the area that, most of the work was in the southwest portion of the city because it's the squares that had been previously marked and we wanted to get those taken care of because the marks, the marks were done some years ago and for whatever reason, the sidewalk wasn't replaced. So, that's what we were focusing on. We did a few other spots around town, but there wasn't any continuous stretch anywhere. It was just mostly trip hazards and cracked squares, just randomly distributed through town, but again, concentrated in the southwest quadrant of the city.
So, one less it's our, our ongoing project that we do every year?
Yeah, that's our annual remove and replace program.
Thank you.
Anything further? Roll call. Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Knite?
Yes.
Alderman Caddala?
Yes.
Alderman Shaki?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Luiton?
Yes.
That passes?
Third item is a motion to approve 2008 street improvements program pay request number three.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the question? Alderman Wesley?
Which streets were these again that we, these are total resurfaces?
This was resurfacing of the residential streets, the main, I guess the biggest one was Cedar, Montrose to the south end. We also did a section of Potter. We did Butternut and Hackberry. We did a piece of Sunnyside. We did a section of Potter west of Addison Road and the north end of Station.
Thank you. Anything further? Roll call. Alderman Luiton?
Yes.
Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Shaki?
Yes.
Alderman Caddala?
Yes.
Alderman Knite?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Luiton?
Yes.
That passes ordinance 0-08-48 being ordinance amending the municipal code of the City of Wood Dale, Chapter 7, Water and Sewer Regulation. Is there a second?
Second.
On the question? Roll call. Alderman Shaki?
No.
Alderman Caddala?
Yes.
Alderman Knite?
Yes.
Alderman Police? Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Luiton?
Yes.
That passes ordinance 0-08-48.
Ends my report, Mayor.
Under other business, may I have a motion to approve an ordinance authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to enter in an annexation agreement for the property commonly known as Klein Homes, Inc. or other motion?
I, I would make the other motion to, to continue.
Table.
Or, or to table, whatever the appropriate term is.
Alderman, do you wanna make that motion to table items one, two, three, and four under other business?
Yes.
Pause.
It, it, actually four is the Burris property.
Mr. Bond? We can't proceed with item four at this time?
Okay.
Item four, if you have a motion to table items one, two, and three, item four is contingent, the annexation of the Burris property is contingent upon the annexation of the Klein property in order for there to be contiguity or touching. If the, that action is delayed or deferred on the Klein property, there is not the legal nexus to the city's limits for the Burris property, so that can't go forward. So, I think it'd be appropriate to, if it's the desire of the council to table items 11, one, two, and three, and then automatically you'd simply take, remove item four from the agenda and place it on a future agenda.
Okay, that's, that would be my motion then.
Alderman Caddala?
Actually, I, before, before we accept the second, I just...
I did not hear, except second.
All right. I'm, I'm not in favor of tabling this unless, unless we can make two things happen. First, I don't want to table it beyond the first council meeting of January of '09. And second, Mr. Subak spoke of the informal agreement that we have in place with the property owner to not touch the trees. I asked our city attorney if it would be appropriate for me to ask that we draft and sign a formal agreement that that property shall between now and this, and this next